No, she's not here.
Please put signs up.
Thompson.
Would you, are you gonna ask me?
I'd be happy to talk to John. Yes, our moment, Swasey, is the... Blue fire truck they got over there. Swasey's got a blue fire truck.
That's backwards. That's gonna confuse a lot of people.
Big blue.
You need one? You're gonna use one.
They're on the table.
There's gotta be one on the table.
There is.
Yeah, it is down there.
You wanna slide 'em over? Steve set 'em up.
So that was you? Oh.
Was that right? Okay.
There usually is one down at the table in case people...
There is still one down there.
That was for Diane.
Yeah, well, yeah, now it's...
We have an action.
Now it's Joe.
Okay. Here, there's one there. Good evening, Danvers. Welcome to our September 17th, 2019 meeting. Gardner, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have an approval of the minutes, please?
I move we approve the minutes of September 3rd.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience with new public business that's not on the agenda, you can go to the microphone. Okay, no new business, thank you. The board is in receipt of an application by Paul Minsky, 15 Lynn Shore Drive, Lynn, for reappointment as civil constable in the town of Danvers. Somebody here to speak to that? Please go to the microphone and introduce yourself. Is everything in order, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, all the qualifications for renewal have been met.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Paul Minsky. I'd like to be reappointed as a constable for Danvers.
That's it? That's it, okay?
That's what I want. I've been doing it for many years.
Bill?
No questions.
Gardner?
No, the paperwork's all in order and I'm happy for the history and details you wanted to do. Thank you.
Diane?
I almost said, "Thank you."
And?
Excellent background.
David, thank you.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Move to accept the applicant as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Paul.
Bye.
Aye, thank you.
A public hearing will be held under Chapter 138 of the general laws on the application of Massachusetts Part I Holding Company, LLC DBA Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, 100 Independence Way, Robert Lavoy, manager, for change of ownership in connection with the all-alcoholic license at that location. Is someone here to speak to this?
Good evening.
Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Pat Lennox. I'm one of the owners of the current business and I am here to answer any possible questions. I know that the application, which was prepared by a bunch of attorneys, is pretty lengthy and involved. The process is really actually pretty simple. What we're trying to do, and I would be glad to explain that if you'd like.
Please.
Basically, the restaurant is owned by an LLC, which is owned by several individuals, several being seven of us. And we are going through some tax planning and have hired a bunch of very intelligent attorneys and tax accountants. And they have suggested that we do this structure that's being proposed. So although this is mentioned as a change of ownership, it's not a change of ownership. It's the exact same people that own the restaurant today that will own the restaurant when we're done with this change of ownership.
So if I may, Mr. Clerk, it's not a change of ownership, but it's advertised as such. The paperwork in order?
Oh, you can answer him.
Mr. Chairman, the application as presented indicates change of ownership interest, LLC members, LLP partners and trustees.
But you're saying there's no change in those aforementioned people?
Correct. The same people that own the existing LLC will own the end LLC. The same exact ownership. Nothing will change from an operations standpoint, nothing will change from an ownership standpoint. It's just the same. This is at the recommendation of some attorneys and tax accountants.
I get it, okay. Diane, you want to ask some questions?
Okay, I can go first.
Okay. David?
I'm assuming, you know, if there's some technical appearance of irregularity in ownership or words, as long as the ABCC and their attorneys happen to agree to it, what do we care? You know, 'cause it's legit. Then it's gonna be so, I say, approved.
Yeah, and I understand and I, we appreciate your time because obviously, we understand that we've gotta go through and take up your time. Just to change a name, essentially, it's the same people that own it, but that's the process that we...
And it's a process we like to adhere to.
And us as well. That's why we're here.
Thank you. Gardner?
I have no questions. My presumption is that the liquor manager of record remains.
The ownership issues, as mentioned by the applicant here this evening, is the only thing that's changed.
Thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Diane?
No. So you're really just changing the same members to a different entity? Really, that's it?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Very good.
Can I just mention one thing? The attorneys asked me that when I'm here, if I could make sure that within the application on page seven, that the date of the meeting is specified. They, it's August 7th?
We received that information this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any comments, questions?
I move we close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the will of the board?
I move that we accept the application with the date added to page seven as requested.
It is, it is.
Okay.
Second motion?
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Go Pats.
A public hearing will be held to consider whether the license to sell alcoholic beverages held by Mexicali Grill, 29 Andover Street, Lefty McMiddle Donald, manager should be suspended, revoked or limited in any way. Mr. Town Manager?
I believe, I don't know, if you'd like to hear a summary again from the chief or if you'd like to hear directly from the restaurant? I think that's up to the board.
I think we'd like to hear a summary from the chief, if he's willing.
Yes.
Good evening, Pat Ambrose, Chief of Police. On August 5th of 2019, the Danvers police conducted alcohol compliance checks throughout the town of Danvers. There was a public notification prior to this and tonight, there was a violation at the Mexicali Restaurant on 114 in Danvers, specifically a violation of 204 CMR 2.052, permitting an illegality on the license premise to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 3434(c), which is selling or furnishing an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21. Specifically, on August 5th at 17:23 hours, Sergeant Paul De Sari along with Officer Chase went to the Mexicali Restaurant with an 18-year-old female that was working as the operative to go into the establishments. She went into the establishment, ordered a Bud Light bottle, did not produce a ID. The bottle was served along with some nachos to her. She stood up immediately without any conversation, turned around, went back out, notified the officers of what took place. The officers then entered into the restaurant, identified themselves. They spoke to the manager and identified the bartender. Excuse me. At that time, they spoke to the bartender, which was identified as Jose De La Cruz Flores. And the manager on duty was Aurelia Margarita Lepe Maldonado. And they notified her what transpired. The Bud Light and the chips were still sitting on the bottle when they went in there. Everything else was in compliance. The folks were cooperative. They understood that there was a violation that took place and you folks would be notified of the violation. Those are essentially it.
Thank you, Chief. Somebody from Mexicali like to speak?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Felici and I'm the attorney representing Mexicali Grill, the corporate name, Danvers Tacos, Inc. As you may know from having this licensed hearing a year ago when the license was granted, this is a Mexican family restaurant where the owner, Mr. Francisco Lepe, along with his sister Aurelia Lepe, the manager of record, have tried to establish a very good, quiet, family-style Mexican restaurant here in Danvers, similar to the several other ones that him and his family have had in the greater Boston area. His policy at this restaurant, like it is in his other restaurants, is that everybody must be completely tip-certified before they even begin training to become a server or bartender. Mr. De La Cruz is a bartender who has been with them for several years before Danvers in their other restaurant and has always been a very good bartender, stellar employee, has gone through tips training on a couple of different occasions. Every two years, they renew it. We have his certification here for his latest renewal a few months ago. And at this particular evening, Mrs. Lepe, the manager of record, was there at the hostess station as she usually is and she was seating some patrons when unfortunately, this young lady was served. Mr. De La Cruz missed it. Their policy is to scan, use their scanner and ID and scan each and every person who appears to be under the age of 30. That's their policy. He missed it. He's not saying anything else. He did miss it. Gave her a Bud Light without asking for her ID. And manager Lepe didn't see it at the time. She was seating a few patrons in another booth and by the time she looked up and saw that this lady had been served, obviously, the mistake had been made. So they cooperated completely. That's the chief indicated. And Mr. De La Cruz was suspended for two days because that is their policy. If you don't, you know, abide by the policy of carding and scanning the IDs of anybody under 30, you get suspended for two days. Second strike and you're out. That's their policy. So a good bartender who's been with them for several years before this here in Danvers, he's been with them for a full year since it's been open in Danvers, never a problem. Mrs. Maldonado Lepe is here to answer any questions you would have about either the policies or procedures that this family entails day in, day out over there. And we apologize, obviously, that we have to be before the board on something like this because they do take it very seriously, this family. And to see even one little strike happen is something that they are not very happy with. And obviously, Mr. De La Cruz has been warned accordingly. So we'd be glad to take any questions that you may have. Like I say, the owner, his sister, the manager of record, and Mr. De La Cruz are here to show that they take this seriously and to answer any questions that the board may have. But it's clearly something that, he missed it this one time. It was one bottle of Bud Light and that was it.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will reserve any comments until the end of the discussion when we decide what we want to do. I just want to make the observation that there's no questioning as to what the police came up with and you are agreeing with what happened.
Certainly, there's no question of them. They indicated that to the officers at the time. No question that there was a bottle of Bud served to a lady that was an out-of-age.
And I appreciate the fact that they're all here in person at this hearing. That's all I'll say at this present time.
Thank you. David?
Nothing, thank you.
Gardner?
Could I ask, through you to the town clerk, has there been any other violations under this ownership in the past 24 months?
Mexicali was before us, before the board on April 3rd, 2019. But the board voted no action on that issue.
Okay, there was no action. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
All set. Diane?
No, I want to thank you for admitting to a mistake. It happens, obviously. If we do find you in violation, the next time, you'll have to close, which is bad. I think suspension of two days is adequate. I don't believe in this firing everybody thing. But I gotta say, it's in the newspaper before they go out checking. They give you a warning, so... But Bud Light is something I would make sure I card everybody for. Thank you.
So these compliance checks are done for a purpose, for a reason. Notice is given. We really shouldn't have to give notice because we expect you folks to have a policy. You say you have a policy. So it's beyond me how a young person under 21 can walk in and get a bottle of Bud. It's just beyond me. Whether you're busy, you're not busy, if you have a policy, you should adhere to that policy. There should be no excuses. And it's not just a bottle of Bud. It's serving a minor alcohol. So at this time, it is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience with any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll go back to the board. What you feel is an appropriate action tonight for serving a minor.
I'll go with the first step, which is one day suspension held in a ban. I believe it's for 12 months. If there's no infractions, we move on. Just exactly what our rules say.
Gardner?
I'll second the motion and I would like some discussion.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion?
Before you two...
Yep.
Does the chief wish to be heard on disposition?
No, I do not.
Sure.
No, I do not.
Thank you.
So we have a motion for one day held in a ban for one year.
Second.
It's been seconded. So for discussion purposes, the maker of the motion want to say anything?
No.
Thank you. Gardner?
It just, the only thing is, we did have you here on April 3rd. We took no action because of the... There was insufficient... We felt, some of the board members felt there was insufficient people, reason to find you then. But it was the same manager at the time on April 3rd and again at this time. I'm wondering if there isn't more strident steps you can take. We have other establishments that card everybody, period. We don't, they don't set a 30 days. And they have other establishments, and I appreciate that you scan everybody. That's a good thing. We have other establishments that do their own compliance checks. On their own dime, they send people in to do their own checks to make sure this doesn't happen because it's better that you catch it internally than externally. So I certainly wouldn't add that as a condition to the motion, but I think that you would consider some more corporate-wide or restaurant-wide solutioning that affirms the policy you already have. That's all, thank you.
Bill?
No comments?
I just would, at this point, say that in April, you caught a break from us. We didn't feel there was a sufficiently exacting facts laying out in front of us. We, you caught a break from us at that point. I'm totally in line with the proposal tonight because it's within our guidelines that you'd have a one-day suspension held in a r- for a year, realizing that, that if nothing happens in a year, that isn't served. If something happens within a year, that would be served and you most likely would be getting a three-day suspension that would be held in escrow unless it was a very flagrant violation. So I'll be in support of this motion that was made tonight.
Any other comments? So, in my opinion, you got off with no action the last time and you're getting the smallest penalty we can give or give this particular instance. I'm not going to be voting in favor of it, but I just hope I don't see you back here in front of us ever. What's, are all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you again for all of you coming. We do appreciate that.
We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The board is in receipt of an application from Danvers ICL1 LLC DBA North Auto Annex for administrative DBA name change on a Class II dealer's license at that location, approved at the September 3rd, 2019 meeting, to Danvers ICL1 LLC DBA1 North Pre-Owned at 241 Newberry Street, Danvers. Richard Collins, President. Is Mr. Collins here to explain all these letters?
Mr. Chairman, Town Clerk Collins can explain for the applicant.
Any relation?
No.
Okay.
Not at all. It was apparent after the board unanimously approved the establishment of a second-class dealer's license at that location at 241 Newberry Street, that Honda was not happy with the wording or the name of the DBA name of the business. So the applicant came into the office and spoke with my assistant at the time and I indicated to them that we would try to put it on the agenda for the next meeting and I would speak to it. It's just a simple name change from North Auto Annex to One North Pre-Owned. And it was, I have a copy of a communication that they had emailed to us.
Thank you for the explanation. Very good. Diane, any questions? David?
Thank you, no.
Gardner?
All set.
And Bill?
No questions.
What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark and Rita.
The board will hear from the police chief regarding two liquor violations. Chief?
Good evening. I have two liquor violations to present to you tonight for the board. First happening on August 17th at approximately 11:16 hours. Specifically, the violation was 204 CMR 2.052, permitting an illegality on the license premise to it, MGL 138, Section 69, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person. On August 17th, the officers were dispatched to Breakaway, located at 221 Newberry Street in Danvers, for an intoxicated and disorderly person. Upon arrival, the officers were informed that a male patron had been attempting to start a fight with other customers. The staff informed officers that the patron was getting out of hand and he was asked to leave but refused. Officers spoke to the party, observed that he was slurring his speech. He was unsteady on his feet. Officers performed fields of variety tests in which he failed. Officers determined that he was clearly intoxicated. He was placed into protective custody. At this point in time, the owner of Breakaway Golf, Joseph Crowley, was spoken to as well as the bartender of duty, Joanne Parcellin. Parcellin informed officers that the subject was in the bar for approximately an hour, was served two Dewar's scotches and paid for it in cash, in which we received the two individual receipts, sales receipts for the transactions of the Dewars. Also to be noted, which isn't noted in the initial violation sheet, that male subject, after being released to a responsible adult, was allowed to get back into his car and subsequently was arrested for OUI shortly thereafter being released. That is the first violation.
Any questions for the chief on the first one? Anyone on the board?
Chief, it's, there's always a question of if the, if the location called the officer because they felt someone was getting out of hand, then how do you kind of determine whether it was a Good Samaritan? You know, the person may have come in inebriated or whatever happened that they didn't appear inebriated when they were served, but obviously, it was the tipping point that caused them to be that way. I, we always balance the question of, you know, are they doing the right thing by calling to say, "Hey, this guy's getting out of hand. We don't want him here. He's starting to raise rival." Versus, so I guess that'll be more questioning when we come, if they come before us.
Yeah, I understand what the board is asking. It is something that we always try to make a judgment on. This person was clearly combative. He was, he was clearly intoxicated. And it's our opinion that the additional Dewars that were handed to him while he was at this location were or was a trans, a serving to an intoxicated person, which only added to this intoxicated state that he was in and the problems that we had to handle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? What's the, what would the board like to do on this particular one?
Mr. Chairman, I move we ask the owners of Breakaway to answer to this finding, 204 CMR 2.052, permitting illegality, the premise, to discuss any action, revocation or suspension.
Is October 15th okay with you?
That's fine if that's what our docket is. Yes, thank you.
Anybody?
Second.
Comments? We have a first motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Chief?
Thank you. Thank you. The second violation occurred August 30th of this year at approximately 11:34 PM. Again, it was 204 CMR 2.052 permitting an illegality on the license premise, to wit Mass. General Law 138, Section 69, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person. There was three counts to this call. This, this happened at Osborne Tavern, 49 Maple Street in town. On August 30th, at 11:34, officers were dispatched to Osborne Tavern for a report of an intoxicated female getting into a car. This was a third-party call to the police station, reporting that they were seeing an intoxicated person getting into a car. The responding officers located the female sitting inside the parked vehicle, and they determined that she was clearly intoxicated. Fortunately, she was not operating the vehicle. She stated that she had been at the establishment with two family members. They located those two family members inside the, in Osborne's. Both of those females, both were intoxicated, according to the officers, and that's what they determined, in speaking to them and through observations. All three females were unfit to drive and were provided transportation safely home. Sergeant Shabowitz was on scene. He spoke to the owner, Joel Hartnett, and he asked to speak to the bartender. The bartender was identified as Michelle Bristol. Ms. Bristol produced one bar tab for all three females. The tab was opened at 20:59, and it was closed approximately an hour later, excuse me, 23:08, with a total of 10 drinks being served. The bartender stated that she served, the female that, that we found as intoxicated outside getting into the female, into the car, three Kahlua drinks. Second female was served three 16-ounce shipwreck beers and a shot of Fireball, and the third female was served two Tito vodkas and a shot of Fireball. Again, all three ladies were deemed to be intoxicated, exhibited signs of intoxication that the officers determined while speaking and dealing with the folks. All three were incapable of driving, and they were subsequently brought home, so there wasn't an issue with their operation under the influence.
Questions on the board for the chief? Anyone? Please.
Chief, do you know what a Fireball is?
Specifically, no, I don't.
May I? It's, Fireball is a brand of whiskey. It's a shot of whiskey, cinnamon whiskey.
Cinnamon.
Okay, and a Tito? What's a Tito?
Tito is a type of vodka that's mixed in. It's a very, I'm sorry, tequila. It's a type of tequila.
Okay, thank you.
No, Tito is...
Tito vodka.
Oh, Tito vodka, okay.
Yeah, it's the new thing.
Mr. Chairman, through you, and it may not be to, I'm, as we always ask for, and it may not be to the chief directly, but as we always ask for tip certifications for everybody who serves, or some others, is there, is there a way to get in the tip certification some identification of responsible service, as in how many drinks in a one-hour or two-hour period? In one case, we have several drinks, and this is over a two-hour and nine-minute period. I'm wondering if we can get, like, a tips guideline for the board or not?
I think they've been numerous classes for tip certification in town, if I'm not mistaken. Is there any material from those classes that we can?
I'm not familiar with any set guidelines that say two drinks in an hour, or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the chiefs?
I move we...
Any other questions for the chief?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Would one of your officers be able to come if we bring these folks before us to testify?
Yes.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we ask the owners of Osborne Tavern LLC to come before the board, in regards to RE 204, CMR 205, permitting illegality on the license premises, to discuss any action, revocation, or suspension.
Is October 15th, all right?
Sure.
Thank you. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you, chief.